Hello everyone, how are you today? Uh, it's the day after Christmas. I hope everyone had a great Christmas and I hope you have a wonderful new year. This is kind of a long video, so let's uh, oh it's on 1X, okay. Let's get into it. This is a Clearwater, Florida city council meeting. You got Mayor Rectum right here. You got Li- Li- Lisa or Lena Left Shoulder Texaris. She's always got her left shoulder exposed. You got the former, former uh, mayor there. You got this guy who's a scumbag and can't say anything without reading off a script and turning bright red. And you got this imbecile lawyer, it looks like he's wearing one of those sped helmets from back in the day. Not sure she, who she is. Let's see here, and then you got this guy Cotton, which is the only guy who's voting in favor of free speech, the only one on the whole council. And then you got this other idiot here named Slaughter, he's got a bunch of problems. So this is Clearwater, Florida, they have these meetings about, I don't know, a two-minute walk from the headquarters of Scientology. Um, their police force gets twenty-five million dollars a year, they're city police. I believe all city police are unconstitutional. And as a matter of fact, they will do whatever the mayor tells them. A- and uh, uh, one, someone came up to this podium and spoke one time. His name is Mr. Beluba, and he said he gets under the thin skin of the mayor. And Sergeant Jared Stiff literally arrested him for that. Put him in a cage for saying that he gets under the thin skin of the mayor. I believe he was convicted too, because the guy's old and he didn't have the wherewithal to fight it. And that's what they depend on, that you can't fight them back. So, the whole thing started when Solo Yakker was doing his open carry activism down Clearwater Beach. Cops came, grabbed him immediately, disarmed him, detained him, threw him in the back of their car, and he still had a pistol on him. Uh, uh, disassembled his firearm, unloaded it, and then let him stew back there, and he had his cell phone too, he called his lawyer in the back thing. Let him stew in the back of the cop car on the beach, while they figured out the law, which is you can open carry on the way to or from hunting, fishing, or camping. And just because people don't like it on Clearwater Beach, the cops came falsely imprisoned him, uh, put their hands on him, uh, uh, confiscated as well, everything they did was unconstitutional and illegal. Do you think anything happened? No. So, what Solo Yakker do, he started going to the council meetings. And when he went to complain about him being falsely imprisoned and all the felonies committed against him by the Clearwater PD, the, the guy who's police chief now actually got up and assaulted him in front of this city council and the former mayor. So he assaulted him, so then I started going, and I started bringing up all the crimes they committed. And they just keep saying that we're there for clicks and views, even though the media's there all the time, they've interviewed me a couple times, Bay News Nine and some lady named McManus who writes for the Tampa, Tampa Tribune or Tampa Bay Times or whatever the hell. But they never have nothing to say about them, because they don't have an opinion and they're not activists as well as journalists. We're a hybrid, we're journalists and activists. And we want our activism to be seen, yes, we want clicks and views, of course. Every person on YouTube, every journalist, every activist wants views to their cause. That's the whole point of being active, you imbeciles. So what they did was suspend the, the, when we started going up there in groups, and especially when I started going up there, you can watch some of my former uh, uh, public comments. I never cussed once. I never wore a flak jacket like Solo Yakker does. And they just can't handle it, so they started suspending the public comment portion of the meeting for three months at a time, so we show back up every three months. And they didn't like that either, so now they're proposing to permanently ban the public comment portion of the meeting. And this is like a pre-discussion, this is how they, this is how they operate. They decide everything ahead of time, and then when it's time for the meeting, almost, I've only seen one vote where it wasn't unanimous against the people. So I'll try not to interrupt this too much, but I'm not very good at that, so bear with me.
Trying to get through it. Now it's 12:40.
Okay, um, thank you mayor, um, I'm sure as everyone will recall, um, the, we are coming up on our ninety days from the last time the council took action uh, relating to the order of business on the agenda. Uh, so to recap, it was almost ninety days ago that the council voted by supermajority at that time to alter the agenda, to focus entirely on the agenda items. In other words, all that's on the agenda now is items that you're voting on, presentations, reports, etc. And it does not have a space or window of opportunity, uh, for the public, anyway, to introduce or speak on items that are unrelated to the business.
So by Florida law, they have to let you speak on the agenda items. But they do not have to have public comments on the agenda. So they're here, they're talking about getting rid of public comments altogether. So the only time you can talk, and I'm sure they would, they would get rid of this too, but there's a Florida law, so you can only talk about the agenda item and specifically about the agenda item, if you want to go there. So they want to get rid of the free speech portion of the meeting altogether, because they don't like that we redress our grievances and that people can see it online and send them emails and stuff and, and phone calls, they don't like it.
At hand, uh, as a reminder, there is a statutory right in Florida for folks to comment on agenda items, uh, and that has been preserved and must be preserved, uh, as required by Florida law. So now that we're coming up on the end of that ninety-day period, uh, the decision comes back to the council to decide what you'd like to do next. So your options really are as follows. Option number one, if the council is prepared to make a permanent decision, I'm gonna put this in quotes, a permanent decision, uh, then you could direct me to update the resolution, which would change council rules permanently. And again, I'm putting that in quotes, because nothing in life is forever, we're just talking about resolutions. Resolutions can be changed at a moment's note, not a moment's notice, but at one meeting's notice, uh, I'll say, not a moment's notice. One meeting's notice, we can change resolutions. But when I say permanent, what I mean is that we would officially change the council rules to reflect the new rubric, meaning that we would officially delete that portion of the agenda that relates to members of the public commenting on items.
Get rid of public comment forever, because they don't like us.
That are unrelated to the business at hand. Of course, council members always have the ability during council member discussion to bring up any item of your choosing, because it is your meeting, and you're here for your own meeting. So that's option number one, is I can change council rules. Uh, that can pass with a simple majority, by the way. But it would need to come back at the next council meeting, meaning that if that's the direction council gives me, we will bring that back at the next council work session, which I guess would be January fifteenth, if I'm not mistaken, right, be January fifteenth, and then it will be vote.
We will all be there January fifteenth to oppose this measure. Please join us. January fifteenth, Clearwater Public Library, 5pm, please join us.
On, uh, January eighteenth, which would be the next council meeting, that's one option. Option number two is to allow the current rubric to simply expire, uh, if.
Oh, no way, we're not gonna let this free speech ban expire, no way.
You allow the temporary suspension of that portion of the meeting to expire, then it will default starting in January back to the existing rules. Uh, meaning that that portion of the meeting will return, the clerk will put it back on the agenda as it had been previously, and that will come back, you know, pending further action by the council. Uh, and then the third option would be a continuation of temporary action. Uh, just like you did previously, council has the ability to simply make a motion, not today, but Thursday. Would have the ability to make a motion on this Thursday to temporarily extend the pause for whatever duration you deem fit. Whether that's another ninety days, whether it's six months, or whatever time period you see fit. Temporary measures like that do require supermajority to pass, um, because they're considered temporary deviations from the rules. So, um, those are kind of the menu of options, um, but happy to answer any questions and of course we'll take direction from the council.
Okay, discussion.
Watch, watch their body language, they do a bunch of uh, government parasite splaining. And then when they finally say what they're gonna do and how they're gonna vote, their body language, they like twitch, you'll watch, watch this, it's crazy.
You want me to start it off?
They know they're doing something wrong.
Listen, I, I don't know about the rest of you, but uh, I haven't had anybody living in the city of Clearwater that has called me and said they wish that we would have items, uh, not on the agenda back, you know, public speaking. I think everybody.
This is the, this is where they say, people who, because a lot of us don't live there, they go there. Which shouldn't matter one bit, free speech is free speech and you should be for free speech and for the people, not against them. So what he's, what the excuse they're gonna use is that not enough people from Clearwater want their free speech or have told us that they want their free speech in the public comments section of the, the meeting. So, we're gonna vote against free speech forever.
That I've talked to thinks the council meetings have gone back to a normal type council meeting and they're, they're pretty happy with that.
Normal as in, there's no pe- nobody redressing their grievances, there's nobody complaining about the illegal actions of their cops. By the way, the number two in the police union in Clearwater got arrested for smuggling hundreds of pounds of fentanyl and other drugs. Hundreds of pounds. Twenty-five million dollars is given to this Clearwater PD, and they will arrest you for speech, and they will arrest you for open carry, they will arrest you for abiding by the law. And they get twenty-five million dollars, and they're not required to know people's rights or constitutional rights. And this, this is what you got right here.
Um, you know, and a couple of people that we've had that come up, that came up, where they were discussing items, problematic items, uh, we talked to them after the meeting, or they could get us on email, or they can call us, and that's.
They just hate that lots of people can see what they're doing and saying. They want to have one-on-one conversations and emails, that way they could just ignore it. It's easy to ignore one person. But when you got Solo Yakker, the armed fisherman, and others, and me, and others putting stuff on their YouTube channel, it's seen by a lot of people, and they don't like it, they don't like it. They like the old way, where it's one here, one there, they could just ignore them and tell them, go ahead and sue us. But now, you got public opinion, and they just can't stand public opinion, and they do, and they can tell by the way they vote.
Seems to have helped. So I would say, and we could change it at any time, but almost, I, I would be leaning toward just a permanent decision to leave it.
See how he qualified that with, oh, we could change it anytime, but let's get rid of it permanently. Why'd you qualify that? Because you know what you're doing is wrong.
That's where we take shit up.
You know, you, you speak about.
I mean, to, to take it off.
To take it off, and you speak about no one actually talking to you about it. I've had several people who really want it back, but those are the same people that have my personal number and that I go out and have lunch with, who have access to me, so, uh, like you said, I have, I am not hearing from the majority of people that they, that they necessarily want it, I.
So again, since they're not hearing from the majority of people, they decide to forever get rid of the free speech portion of the council meeting. So you hear that, not enough people are telling them that they want the free speech portion of the meeting. Not enough people are telling these people. You understand what that means?
Also have heard, uh, comments that say that they feel safer, they feel like it's more controlled. Um, it is a business meeting, and so.
No, it's not a business meeting, this is another excuse they use. It's a city council meeting, you're not a corporation. You're, you steal literally people's tax money against their will, and you do what you want with it. That's not a business by any stretch of the imagination. A business is voluntary, what you guys do is not voluntary, and to keep labeling it as a business meeting is intellectually dishonest.
What I do wanna maybe discuss for future, uh, consideration is, for those who really feel that they want that open forum, then let's have quarterly town hall meetings. That would be some.
Now this is a new thing they're trying to do, where let's get rid of the open, the free speech part of this meeting. Let's move it to a different venue, let's move it to a town hall meeting. And later on you're gonna hear them say, let's move it to a different room after hours. And then the one guy will say, but they bring their own cameras.
Where that we can listen, but to have just random conversations during a business meeting, that I'm opposed to, so, um, I, I'm leaning towards permanently, you know, removing it.
Now you see her body language and how she stuttered there? When she finally said, let's get rid of it permanently, she stuttered, let's go back. Watch, she stutters, and she's uncomfortable, and she's looking down, she knows what she's doing is wrong.
Ends during a business meeting, that I'm opposed to, so, um, I, I'm leaning towards permanently, you know, removing it.
I gotta pee. Alright, I'm back.
You don't have to come.
I do have something to say, but I'll probably be the dissenting, so if you.
Yeah, no, I'll go ahead, because I know you'll be on the other side of the coin, so. And I, I appreciate the opportunity. I, I'm with you on this, um, we said at the very beginning, this wasn't an easy decision for us to make, because we do very seriously value a citizen input and how our.
Unless, they complain about our police or what we do. Unless they actually have a serious complaint against the police chief who assaulted the armed fisherman in there. Or the police who, who kidnapped him on the, the Clearwater Beach. Or if we have a problem with the second in the police union dealing hundreds of pounds of fentanyl and other drugs. And, and what's funny is the Clearwater PD and one of the sheriffs, I think, in Pinellas, actually let them deal the drugs for months and months before they busted him.
Citizens feel in our community and that, that, that we all take that to heart, uh, and that decision weighed on all of us. But I think with that decision, we also said that there is a downside to it. And the downside was that we needed to work harder as a council and harder as a staff to make sure that our words met those actions. And I, and I commend all of you and all of staff on, on being completely attentive to the needs of the community, whether it's an email, whether it's a phone call, whether it's grabbing lunch or coffee, whether it's being, you know, pulled aside at a Christmas meeting to be shown pictures of.
Just don't do it here during open comments at the city council meeting. Just don't do it here.
Something that's wrong on their street, and you, you all and we all are, have been completely receptive and open to that and have worked very hard to hear those voices, so I commend you all on that. I'm supportive of it as well, I have heard very few complaints, and the couple that have are the couple that we hear from quite often anyway, so, I'm with you, um, op- option.
So again, we haven't heard enough complaints about the free speech portion of the meeting, except from the two residents there that speak at every meeting, and they don't care about them anymore, because they're tired of them.
One, I'm, I'm supportive of them.
Again, you see his weird body language there, he's like disappointed and looking down. He's gonna support the ban on free speech.
So I'll agree, I don't believe that we're infringing on anybody's constitutional rights, we go about our business with the.
Oh really, this is the one guy who voted against it last time. But he doesn't believe he's infringing on anyone's constitutional rights by completely taking away the free speech portion. While it's not illegal for them to do it, it's in the spirit of free speech. It might not be technically unconstitutional, but it's in the spirit of free speech. And I'm sure each one of these swore an oath to the constitution. Meanwhile, they're taking a dump all over it.
Agenda items and they're able to speak to those, um, I will say that I still believe in the ability for citizens or business owners here in Clearwater to be able to stand before us, you know, the directors that are in the room, um, our higher city staff and their elected officials, for their three to ten minutes and say their piece. I have no issue with that and just trying to get through some of the.
So he has no issue with the government parasites and the people going up there and talking and asking for millions of dollars. They have an issue with us wanting our First Amendment rights respected and our Second Amendment rights respected, and holding the police accountable, that's what they have a problem with.
The others that may come from wherever to bring forward.
Again, he's talking about us. Again, the people who take millions of dollars from them, they could talk all they want. But when we come there and tell you, your police union guy's dealing hundreds of pounds of fentanyl and other drugs, and you, and they attack the armed fishermen right there in the city council, and we want something done, they pretend like they don't hear all that stuff.
Whatever, um, that's just part of it, in my opinion, and we roll up the punches, um, and, and make our way through it. So, you know, I am going to be opposed again to this, I think that public comment is, is an important thing to have, it allows them to come before all of us. I don't disagree, you have email, you have phone numbers, and all of us up here have been attentive to those. Uh, I do agree with that, um, I do agree with the town hall thing, I think that all of us would participate in that if our schedules are open and we had one, you know, set forward, because we really do, and I think each of you do care about your citizens and, and businesses that are here.
Nonsense, nonsense, nonsense.
But I will still probably be the dissenting vote on that, um, just because of what I've explained.
Well, let me ask you this, what if, what if we did that, but we just did it separately from this meeting, the same guy?
So again, same night, let everyone go home and let the auditors, after everything is said and done, say stuff, they got, they have to make special accommodations, they have to do, they have to discriminate some sort of way so that everyone doesn't have to hear what we have to say.
Um, but without all the staff here, uh, the whole point of it is for whoever's at the podium to talk to us. And our, one of our challenges has been, they use the opportunity to direct, you know, to talk about everyone else except us. Yeah, so, uh, the last mayor's conference I went to, I.
So they actually use their speech freely, is what you're saying, that's what you have an issue with. And by the way, public comments used to be at the beginning of the meetings, that's another thing they did, they moved it from the beginning to the end, thinking we wouldn't want to sit through a whole meeting. But when we started staying for the whole meeting and speaking at the end, now they went to suspending it every three months, now they're going to permanently suspend it, because they're scum of the earth, let's be honest.
And we talked about, yeah, it, the, the challenge is across the country, I mean, the, the world has changed since nineteen seventies when you had.
That's right, across the country, people are waking up and understanding that if they bring a camera and confront you right to your stupid face, that something gets done when you make a big enough mistake, like banning the American flag like they did in New Jersey. You guys are antithetical to freedom and the constitution, period, point blank.
This on your agenda, people had, they never had any other way to communicate other than come to a meeting. And now, and now that's all recorded and televised, and people have tended at our meetings to make it more about them and their personal persona or whatever, rather than.
See, he's bullsh- he's full of it right there. Every single time I went there, I specifically told you Jared Stiff arrested someone for speech. They falsely imprisoned Solo Yakker, your police chief assaulted him in the chambers right there where you sit. Has nothing to do with my persona, idiot. And how come you don't say the same thing about mainstream media? Because they don't have an opinion and they don't redress their grievances? This is a, this is a typical doublespeak parasite politician right here. No wonder he's the mayor.
It's just about addressing community concerns, so, some of these other communities, one in Virginia, mayor told me, um, they have a separate meeting at five o'clock, before six o'clock, in a separate room, it's not recorded, it's not televised. Entire council, city manager, city attorney is there, you come up, you get your three minutes, you do whatever you want to do, say whatever you want to say, it's not on the agenda, and, um, and then they stop. Whatever time the council meeting stops, if they have enough people, if not, they just end it, and then they come in for the council meeting, but there's a separate place, time and place for that presentation, and.
So he wants it now in a separate room. It went from the beginning of the meeting to the end, to suspending it every three months, now to suspending it permanently. Now he's suggesting a solution would be a separate room where there's no TV, it's not televised, and there's no cameras. And you're gonna hear some other idiot on the panel here say, well, they have their own cameras. So it's the cameras, it's the cameras that scare them. Because the mainstream media for decades has licked the government's boot and the police's boot, and finally we have some independent journalists that cut against the grain and actually tell the real story, and these mother effers can't handle it.
It's part of, and they don't do it every meeting, they do it once a month. But it does give folks that opportunity to still do what we're doing as part of the meeting, it just separates it. So that whatever other things they want to do is not disrupting the meeting and letting other citizens with the agenda items come in and discouraging them from wanting to attend to, to speak on the agenda items, so, uh, if we did something like that.
No, again, I think that that, uh, meets the challenge, right? Because then you still have all of the prevalent city staff that's available, plus the elected officials, I think that you'd be coming up with a nice solution for that.
So essentially, the town hall forums.
Why isn't the solution just let people speak their mind for three minutes? You don't interrupt them, and let them be on their way? Because you can't handle three minutes of free speech? You guys really can't handle three minutes of free speech in America, and you call yourselves American.
For sure.
But, but it's, um, it's just the same day and, or at the time, but, um, and I think that would probably reduce our staff's, you know, time and having to sit through all, all that, they wouldn't need to be there, it's just their opportunity to address us and bodies.
Absolutely, no, I don't, I think that's a good solution.
So I, I, I would be, I mean, I, I, I've not gotten anybody other than the folks who, you know, have complained and, and do YouTube videos, uh.
So again, every action they take to get rid of speech in their city council meetings is because we go there with cameras, we redress our grievances about how they falsely imprisoned the armed fishermen, how they attacked them in the city hall, and how they arrested a man for saying he gets under the thin skin of the mayor. That bothers them so much that they blame us wanting clicks and views. Not the fact that they committed felonies against the citizens. They never addressed that, that, it's like that part's never even said, never acknowledged. I'm gonna let them know on the fifteenth, please join us.
Blaming on us not having an all the agenda, other than that group, I've just not gotten any, really anybody to me from Clearwater, um, except for maybe one or two that, uh, are really interested enough having this back on, um, the meeting agenda.
Again, not enough of you have told this dais, the city council, that you think the free speech portion of the meeting should stay. They keep saying, none of you have told them enough. They haven't been told enough that they should have free speech in their meetings.
But I think if we, if we just permanently took it off of our meeting agenda, but committed to looking at doing something like I just discussed, a separate town hall thing, once a month, where you have a chance to come in and talk about whatever. I, I would, I think that's a good alternative, or. That's a good alternative, because I think it would defeat the people that are here, not for business, just for antics.
Again, parasite splaining right there. You are the ones doing the antics, moving the comments. Get rid of it for this free speech, suspending it, move it into the back of the meeting, now you want it in a different room with no cameras and no TV. You are doing the antics, because you can't handle three minutes of free speech. Uh, you guys really think we're that dumb? We understand you're insecure and you don't want your character to be exposed of who you really are. You hate the fact that people watch us, you hate it. That actual citizens care about free speech, and you don't get to run it like the seventies, where you just ignore everybody and do whatever you want. You still ignore everybody and do what you want, but now it's on video, that's the only difference. That's the only difference.
You know, not to be there, but, um, I, I'm fine with that.
I will, I will agree and say that I've only received the same negative emails by, I think, the same people that, that we know here, it's only a select.
There we go again, so not enough of you are telling them that free speech is important. Not enough of you are telling them that, each one of them keeps saying it.
And, other than that, I haven't seen anybody, you know, saying that we need to keep it off or bring it back, that's been a resident or a business owner, so, I won't, so.
So only the residents and the business owners matter to the city council, not the millions of tourists that go to Clearwater every year. See that? Another reason they're trying to get rid of free speech, because the business owners and the actual residents of Clearwater haven't complained to them enough that they should have free speech. I think most Americans thought that was a given, but you guys obviously don't.
Alright, so how would we advertise, we'd advertise this on a separate agenda for once a month?
This is something that Clark and I were just, just kind of talking about, so I mean, I would kind of view this in two parts. So number one would be that portion of the current council rules that includes this agenda, remember it's still in there, because it's only been temporarily suspended. So I think the first thing I would need to do, if there's consensus among council, is to go back, change the resolution, which I'll bring forward in January to say, okay, this is the permanent change to council rules striking that portion for the meeting, that's kind of step number one. Step number two, which could either.
Step one, eliminate free speech permanently.
Be done simultaneous with it, or you could let the dust settle on it and then come back to it later, whichever you prefer, would be this separate meeting and how that's going to play out. Uh, it's really up to the council to decide how, when, and where that would take place. The only, uh, dilemma, I mean, there's two, two issues, number one is kind of the legal side of this, and number two is a little bit of the practical side. So, the legal issue is for sunshine law purposes, I do believe that if this is going to be something that the council as a body is doing, then, uh, you know, we will need to make sure we. then, uh, you know, we will need to make sure we advertise that and have minutes for sunshine purposes. So that's gonna be number, number one. That's gonna be true regardless of where, when and how. But if that's the inclusion of the body, then the clerk's office, you know, will have to, will have to manage that. So that's kind of the legal side of it. The practical side of it is that if it is done here and immediately before the council meeting, you may have to think about either your, number one, what does that mean for dinner options? You know, as we know, but then number two, also, what does that mean from a staff perspective? If, and I don't want to speak for the manager, but if she has staff staying here at night, then essentially that's gonna, that's gonna prolong, like staff has to stay here because now they have to sit through the beginning portion of this to get through to their portion of it. Whereas if this was done at the end, then staff potentially may be able to depart, not the manager or myself, but you know, other staff may be able to-
Staff wouldn't stand. Other than the clerk would have some live recordings, but other than that, there would be no staff.
Gotcha.
Which would eliminate the temptation, hopefully, for folks to get, try and engage the staff of-
In, in the TV aspect of it, I think.
Does it have to be televised?
And it doesn't have to be in the room. It can be in a separate room.
No, um, we were discussing that earlier too. So the form would not have to be required to, were not required by statute to televise it. So it could just be held and then here. Or whatever, whatever room, council chooses.
I, I don't think it's a bad solution. I just think what, what, the problem is that they come in with their own cameras and record the entire thing anyways and-
The problem is, see that? So their first are saying, put it in a different room, don't televise it over their own, they have their own cameras and they put it on their Facebook page. So the problem with that is they have their own cameras. So their whole problem is that what they're doing is captured on camera and put on YouTube and peep thousands and tens of thousands of people see what they are doing. That is their problem. They're like cockroaches running from the light. Let's be honest. How do you say, someone that swears an oath to the constitution, sit here and say, "The problem is they have their own cameras." Unbelievable, dude.
Create their own video and antics regardless of whether our cameras are on. And if that's what we're trying to avoid, that circus by permanently deleting it, we're, we're just kind of changing the venue and time.
So we're trying to avoid free press, free speech and exposure and transparency in government. He's literally admitting what they're trying to do. Do they not hear themselves talking?
Of it, but issuing another platform for that to happen, if that's what we're trying to avoid. That would be my only concern with going that. But it, I, I do see where you're coming from and I do see where that would make sense. I do like the fact that staff doesn't have to be a part of it, doesn't have to be attacked and waste their time listening to it.
But I just don't like that they have their own cameras and that the Al, Al Gore rhythm, Al Gore rhythm invented the internet. Now people can see me turning beet red. Like they could see me, like they know me now. I'm like famous for being a tyrant now and they know it and I can't deal with that. Our whole purpose is to stop transparency. Thought that's the whole reason we're, we're committing all these antics.
And we do check the box, um, of, of letting citizens give input on that forum. It's-
And you eliminate the audience.
Yeah.
The tear for agenda items, you know. So, they're performing, I guess for their own video, whatever, it's fine. I guess in a separate question. Any, anyway, I just threw that as a general idea of an alternative to, to kind of council over top.
An alternative to completely banning free speech.
It's a good point. Need to give folks the opportunity and then we could say that this is, we're still giving you the opportunity to do what you've done. It's just a separate meeting because it just has really slowed down the efficiency of our meetings. It's been really cost taxpayers money, really frankly.
See, the funny part is, Mayor, we have the right to speak on every single agenda item and we can bring extra people to give us 10 minutes each. So if you think getting rid of the free speech portion of the meeting is gonna speed up your meeting, I can just come up there and speak for 10 minutes on each agenda item. You don't have a, a legal way to stop us from speaking one way or another. No matter how many antics you pull, free speech is free speech, whether it's on an agenda item, whether you decide to actually have free speech, we will work our speech into your, into your meeting, like it or not. You're wasting your time. You're wasting taxpayers' money. Just deal with three minutes of free speech and go home and tell your family what a great person you are.
One of these things dragging out when we're putting that on the, the council agenda, so. Okay. Any other further?
So, so, so just make sure I-
I, I think, I think the consensus is, well, it's four of us, four of us is to take it off completely.
Alright, so I can do, I could do that. Um, so-
So four out of five, eighty percent of Clearwater City Council are against the free speech portion of the meeting and they want to get rid of it permanently. Eighty percent of the Clearwater City Council are against the free speech portion of the meeting and they're gonna vote that way.
If, if this is the consensus, I will bring that back in January at the January work session. Uh, and then it'll also give council continued time to think about, you know, what other direction you'd like to give. We can even revisit the topic Thursday night, um, so.
That was gonna be my question. Does council want to revisit this topic Thursday night? To discuss further details?
Are you saying you have to draft something and propose it for?
To eliminate, to change the rules.
Correct. A change of rules will have to come back at the next work session. Um, however, if there's any further discussion the council would like to have on the topic of, of what you'd like to do to replace, you know, that portion of the meeting, we could continue that this Thursday night if there's council direction to do that, or if council already knows what you'd like to do, I could build that into the rule that's we draft. So in other words, we could just do it once, but I would need to know exactly what that direction is. If council's prepared to say that right now, and if you're not, that's okay too. I could just do this portion and then we could come back.
If we don't do something Thursday night, then, then we would have it back on the agenda for the first meeting in January, right?
Correct. That is correct.
And I don't think at least four of us don't want that.
So if we don't talk about this and figure it out by Thursday, eighty percent of us don't want the free speech portion to be back on the, on the agenda items this January fifteenth, when four out of five of us don't want that. Unbelievable that you say that out loud.
About keeping it off until we can talk about it further.
Mayor, can you speak up a little bit?
Yeah. Um, the question about keeping it up until or continuing with the thought process of how we want to go about it. Is that what, what was the question? I'm sorry.
Well, the question is if we don't do something on Thursday night, it could be on for the first meeting in January.
For sure. Like I said, it's a great solution to be able to still hear residents and, uh, business owners in the community of what they want to bring to us. So if that's where we want to go with it, that is a-
But items not on the agenda would be on for the first meeting in January if we don't do something Thursday night.
I still think it has to come on Thursday for sure. Yeah. I thought you were talking about your potential solution for going forward. Okay.
So the vote comes up on Thursday and then if we want, we continue the conversation of whether it's the once a month kind of thing, what kind of format we're looking at. Okay.
Correct. So on, on Thursday, we'll come back before the council will be, number one, the immediate issue of whether the council would like to extend the pause for another 30 days, which gives us time to bring back the permanent change. And then number two, if any council members have additional thoughts regarding what you'd like to come next or what you'd like to replace this, then you don't have to, but you could bring it up Thursday night. So it's just another opportunity because obviously you guys don't get to get there very often as a group or get to talk very often outside the sunshine. So it's just a forum or an opportunity for you guys to continue discussing it. That's all.
Okay. Alright. So anything else? Uh, June 13th, new business.
Okay. I think that's it. So there you go. Eighty percent of the Clearwater City Council are anti-free speech. They can't handle words and sounds that come out of people's faces. They consider it a disruption. They consider it a circus. But when, again, when their cops are, are dealing hundreds of pounds of fentanyl and other drugs, when their cops are falsely imprisoning people on the beach for not breaking the law, when their cops, this guy, you see him right there in the corner. You see his leg? He literally sits under a copy of the constitution and that guy arrested a man for saying he gets under the thin skin of the mayor. That's what the guy said. The mayor says, "Throw him out of here." The guy's like, "I'm allowed to say that. I'm not going anywhere." And the cop literally arrested him for free speech. This is sick. I remind him every time I go there. I go, "How do you sleep at night, stiff?" Jared Stiff, how do you sleep at night when you put a man in jail for speaking? How do you sleep at night? And to me, he looks like a heavy alcoholic. He's got that alligator skin going and that super flushed face. Cause you could tell during his shift that, in my opinion, during his shift, he turns all red because he hasn't had a beer in a long time. And I wouldn't be surprised if he drinks beer or some type of alcohol in a flask while he's on duty. But that's just my guess from the many alcoholics I've encountered through the restaurant business. Anyway, guys, January fifteenth, please join us. Also, I should find their emails and put it in the description because not enough of you are telling them that free speech is important. Alright, everyone. If you lasted this long, thanks so much. Consider joining 99 cents. Give it to me. I'm worth it. Also check out my Etsy store, John's Coin Rings. You type that into Google with no spaces, it'll pull up my store. Uh, also the armed fisherman. Hopefully he shares this so I can get some views. Alright, everybody. Peace and tranquility. Thanks so much for watching. Have a good day and free speech forever. It's the most important right, believe it or not. Free speech is the most important thing in a republic slash democracy. Bye, guys. Bye.